Okay, I'm going to call the CVSD Board Meeting to order at 6:05. Before we get to adjustments to the agenda, I just want to go through kind of what we talked about on Saturday when we held our meeting. There is actually a very specific protocol when we hold electronic meetings, and that's when it comes to taking a vote. Unless it's a unanimous vote, we all do need to state your name when you vote. To that end, I would just ask, when you do talk tonight, if you could just say who you were, just for people who, like Brendan, who may not be able to see who is here. We're going to try and follow kind of a similar process where I've got a list. Actually, you all are kind of in the Brady Bunch box. And I think it'll be easier if, when it comes time to discuss something, we go in order like we did on Saturday. You also do have the option to raise a blue hand. I don't know if you see that over on the participant. If you click on Participants, you can see. Hold on, I gotta. You can see who is there, and there's an opportunity to raise your hand. Angela is going to kind of monitor that and help me know if someone is wanting to talk, and I'm not picking it up. Just please bear with us and be patient. We're going to figure this out as a group. And if something really isn't working, we have some really good problem solvers. We have a lot of people who have used this before. So we'll get through it. Anything else? Okay. Adjustments to the agenda, we do have a few, and it's mainly just to be as efficient as we can tonight. 5.2 committees, we're going to postpone that, and I have a question mark. It may be to the retreat. We actually do have the retreat for discussion tonight. The CVSD school calendar, we're actually going to postpone until the April 7th meeting. That just will give administration and lead time to work on our specific calendar. We are going to adopt the regional calendar tonight, which we have no say in. That's the done deal. Our own school calendar, we do have a say in, so that's going to wait until the 7th. The COVID-19 protocol, we did just put out the letter at the beginning of the -- hold on. We did just put out a letter at about 5:00 this afternoon stating what the next steps were. It's being posted on Front Porch Forum with our links to all of our websites, Twitter, Facebook page. I can tell you that nothing has happened between 5:00 and 6:00. That might change by 8:00, but the administration doesn't really have any new information to We're going to add 5.9 Board Letter under Discussion Matters. And then, we do not have a need for negotiations for executive session, but we do need to do the superintendent evaluation. So Brendan and Erin, I sent everybody the separate meeting log-on for the executive session, so when this meeting ends, we'll start the new meeting. There is a password for that meeting, and it was included in the meeting invite. I think that's it. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda? Okay. Audience and communication? I don't know that we have an audience. Okay. No, this will not expire in 45 minutes, although we could be done in 45 minutes. I'm just looking at the group chat. We have -- Zoom has expanded their free trials to unlimited time for school systems. So that's thank you to Zoom for allowing this to happen. Okay. And everyone can see the chat, so Colleen is just mentioning that this is a public meeting. And anything, actually, that's even on the chat side is open to the public as well. Reports to the Board. We'll start with the committees. We'll start -- I think we just had HR. Why don't we start with HR?
I don't have much to report. We still don't have a date for a meeting unless anything's changed in the last 24 hours.
It has not.
We've offered and had a couple of tentative dates for some all-day sessions in early April, but so far have not been able to get any.
I'm not there, Brendan.
Lynn?
Yeah?
Is Mark talking?
Okay. Hold on just a second. So turn your --
No, that was me, and I'm not logged on to the whatever.
Okay, so Mark, can you just unmute yourself?
Yeah. So Russ and I are here.
Can you also turn your volume up? Or is it well-watched?
And just reporting on the HR Committee, and we were saying that there isn't much to report at this moment. We have proposed a couple of dates for some longer negotiation sessions, and we're still waiting to hear back from them. We did have a meeting this week with the Association because of what's going on now, and it was mentioned then, so hopefully it will spur some action.
Any other questions about HR? So Brendan, can you do the Finance Committee?
If he was in the actual meeting, it might be easier for her to do it. I think it'd be much better for you guys versus everybody else on the line.
Okay. Did you hear that?
No.
He wants you to give the report out. Well, we can update you. The Indicators Committee is still meeting, because we haven't met yet. So it's the never-ending meeting, so there is no update on indicators, but we're going to get there. We're going to get it done. Okay. Are you ready?
I don't know.
Hold on. Go for it. Okay, so the Finance Committee reviewed the second quarter FMR, our most recent meeting. The Financial Management Questionnaire, which is the document that's in the Consent Agenda, and it's really a report to the Board about our financial control position. We spoke briefly about the Budget Debrief, which is later on the agenda, and had a short discussion about doing the district-wide capital construction review with some follow-ups for me on that. Okay. Policy, is there a policy update outside of the Policies for Discussion or Policy Committee?
This is Colleen. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So Mark wrote a memo that's included, and that'll come up later, Policies for Discussion. I just wanted to note that the Policy Committee has met a number of times, and our goal is to take policies that were adopted when we transitioned from CSU to CVSD. We just did a blanket adoption of policies, and so we're going through them methodically to make sure that they fit with CVSD. We started with the VSBA model policies. They had made a lot of revisions to their policies in the past year and had a list of recommendations for deletions, revisions, additions. It was in a VSBA memo that went out. You know, you maybe saw something that was colorful in the fall. And so Mark has been helping us work through that list that VSBA suggested, and so you have a bunch of policies that we'll look at tonight. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay. 4.2, the COLT Report. I'm going to send that to Megan.
So normally, we do a little bit of a highlight of what's in the COLT Report. I think, though, a couple of the things in there, there's a waiting study discussion item, so I think we'll just say, are there questions or follow-up, things that people want to know more about? I'll talk louder. Thanks, Jocelyn. Is that better?
Hey, Ray, can you mute your audio? Por favor.
I muted him.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Did you hear what Megan said? Does anyone have any? We're going to talk about the waiting study in a separate discussion item. Does anyone else have any questions about the COLT Report?
I could not hear what Megan said.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you hear me now if I talk louder? Okay. Basically, just if you have questions, we are happy to go into more detail on anything.
I'll pass for now.
All right. Student Council, Elise and Kate.
Okay, to start, we have a lot, just because we haven't met in a long time. But the first thing we had was the Penguin Plunge back in the first weekend of February, and we actually had over 150 students plunge, which raised over $35,000 for Special Olympics just from CVU, which is pretty awesome. The Black Lives Matter flag was raised by CVU's Racial Alliance Committee on February 14th on the flagpole due to the School Board's new policy. So that was really cool. Can you hear on here? I was hoping that I could go off of Kate's, but --
Oh, I remuted mine, so you could turn it on.
Oh, that's so awkward. My B.
Can they call us older people feel much better? Thank you. You're so kind. Beautiful. Okay. We'll do it again.
Cool. The Black Lives Matter flag was raised outside on the flagpole on February 14th from CVU's Racial Alliance Committee. And also, we had Winter Carnival and Spirit Week happen, and this was the week before February break. So this had Pyjama Day, Jersey Day, USA Day, a bunch of really fun spirit activities, which is followed by Winter Carnival, which is where students have a half-day of classes, and then they had a bunch of dances and teen spirit celebrations. And then we had the Blood Drive last Thursday, which was a very chaotic time for the Blood Drive, but it was super important for the Red Cross to have, as they've had so many cancellations recently and in the next few weeks coming up. So I think we ended up with maybe 60 or 70 appointments, which was not our goal, but we still would take anything we could get, just because we were in desperate need. I saw Ray there, which was very awesome. And so, yeah, there were a lot of extra precautions that they were taking, but Student Council really stepped up, and we made it happen. One thing that I've been asked to mention is, what we've been trying to do is to make the student position on the Board a more informative experience for Board members, so that not -- they wouldn't necessarily always have immediate action, provoke immediate Board action, but I did want to mention that there is a social justice group.
So we're getting some feedback that folks can't hear.
I can't hear. Okay, I'm unmuted.
You can use mine, too, if you want.
Okay.
Mute yours.
It might be like Chromebook sometimes. Okay. So we've been trying to redesign the Student Council position on the School Board a little bit by including more information about what students are doing and what's working, and also what's not working. So what we want to mention this meeting is that there has been a group of social justice student-led clubs that has been meeting every multiple times a week to try and work on their own agenda. And they asked me to mention that they were interested in presenting to the School Board at some point, but that is also something that we would like to bring to the Board more often.
Awesome.
Does anyone have any questions for Elise and Kate?
I'll make a comment, if I may.
Yeah. Just make sure you introduce yourself.
Hi, this is Angela. Elise, that would be wonderful. I think that student groups working in the social justice space would be near the top of my list, as far as people I want to hear more from and learn more about, so that would be terrific. Thank you.
Elise, can we ask how often would they like to come or appear before the Board? Do you know?
So what they ask is, they hope to appear potentially at the next meeting.
Hold on, guys, I can't hear you.
Yeah, I know. It's miserable. So they would hopefully appear at the next meeting, is what they're asking. But I think that also for the students, we would like to report on whatever they have talked about at the Board at every meeting, even if the entire group isn't there.
Jean, you are up for second quarter FMR.
So, second quarter FMR, as of December, we were very modestly, I'd say we were break-even with some big assumptions, but at the time, had high hopes of being able to end the year in that position. I think, as we spoke on Saturday, we have some real challenges ahead of us financially, given what we're dealing with now with school closures, and so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, because it's really pretty invalid at this point. But we were doing okay. We had some big challenges we were working through, big expenses offset by some increases in revenue. Now, you know, the big issues we're facing, loss of food service revenue while we're still paying our folks, you know, staff days, staff pay, if these days aren't waived, could be a big impact, because you know the Governor has said, and we support, that we don't want gaps in pay for our employees. And just a whole slew of other things that are probably smaller, but those are probably the two big ones. And the interest rate differential, which we were enjoying, is now getting to be not so generous. So we have a slew of challenges ahead of us. We do have some offsetting costs, and I have asked the Principals to freeze spending, so we're hoping to contain as much as we can. But until we know the pay issue primarily, and also the impact to our special needs students, if they can't receive services remotely, that will have to make up in the summertime, if I'm understanding correctly, and that would be extra. So we have a slew of challenges, but as somebody on the Board said, that's why we maintain a fund balance. So we're doing the best we can to contain it, but it'll be a challenge.
It's time to be borrowing money from the bond.
Perfect. You're right.
All right. You had a question? No, Brendan?
He says I'm unmuted.
Isn't that weird? You look unmuted. Can you turn the volume up on your phone? Because it shows you're talking.
Oh, are you?
Hold on. I'll hear him.
I asked why.
I muted you. I'm telling you. Okay, go ahead, Brendan, I'm sorry.
Well, Elise, I just want to make sure that we're accurately tracking anything that's been on the coronavirus separately, so at the end of the year, you know, we can show, you know, X amount of money was dealt with this, and where we are from a budget perspective without these extra expenses related to the coronavirus.
We could take a stab at that. Everybody should really understand how swamped everyone is right now, but, you know, first priority is to deliver services. But I understand your point, Brendan, it's a good point.
Does anyone else have a question about the second quarter FMR? Okay. 5.0, Discussion Matters. 5.1, Budget Debrief. I think this is our opportunity to remember that in this not-too-distant past, we passed a budget and a bond, which is really exciting. That's good news to celebrate. I can't believe that was the same month. It seems like that was years ago. And because it seems like it was years ago, it might be, this might be an interesting discussion, because who remembers what they wanted to brief about the budget? But I know that the Finance Committee has, so I'm going to start off with Jean, and then if people have other input that they'd like to provide as well, I'll kind of go. Actually, the little blue hand thing works really well. So I'm going to pass it to Jean right now.
Okay, so these are the things that the Committee discussed, so out of making it easy, I'm going to speak for the Committee. After a brief congratulatory celebration, we discussed, one thing we discussed was next year's budget target. The Committee will bring their proposal in the fall. The tweaking that came up in the discussion was whether or not to allow, in the budget, the savings that the district gets from retirements. If that should be something that's deducted from, you know, if we put a target together, is that something should be considered in the other direction? So more on that in the fall. The budget briefing sheets, which seem to be popular, I don't have one with me, but there, if you remember, there was one on instructional, it was just sort of a, this is what's in there, and this is how we come up with it, and this is where you can find the data. Those were found to be helpful, but I'm interested in anybody else's input on that. We did post a lot of backup data for the Board to see, but we didn't really communicate well how to find it or how to use it. So we'll do a little better on that next time. Things like position by school, you know, some things like that, the actual contract, financial contracts we have, those kind of things were posted, but not communicated as well. And kudos to Bonnie for excellent communication work this year. Those were the things that the Committee discussed, and this is just a time, if there's anything anyone else would like for the Board to consider.
So does anyone else have input about the budget? The process, the debrief, or the process, I guess would be the way to go. Colleen?
So, I mean, it does feel like our budget passed eons ago, and I'm just wondering if this is going to be a bigger topic when we go forward into our retreat, because clearly we're in a new phase of our Board operations. It just feels like it's going to be very different next year. So I had lots of thoughts about the budget process. I'm really grateful for the team, the way that they shared much more with our Board this year. I felt like I knew a little bit more, and as Jean had noted, maybe we didn't, other Board members didn't necessarily know where to find some information, but I've no doubt that we can resolve those kinds of issues. I just feel that it's hard to look back now at where we were. I think process was good, and I just think going forward, it's going to be different.
Because we're going to be looking at a different fiscal picture.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Anyone else have input that they'd like to share? Jean?
One thing I forgot to mention, because Kelly's not here, is that she did bring up, you know, we talked about year-round budgeting, and this is perhaps a deep dive, and she was interested in, at least from the Committee's standpoint, to have a better understanding of how the whole special ed budget goes together. That'd probably be a good, if we get there, Megan, a good thing for us to work on, because that was one of the big pieces that we didn't, that's so complex, I didn't even try to tackle putting it together in a summary doc, but that, it's just an important part, because it's a lot of money. It's really important, and the question of how much the Board influences or can't influence that is an interesting discussion. So I had that sort of on my short list of year-round budgeting topics.
Kelly is here. She's at the bottom, next to Ray. She's right next to you.
I am her.
She's like in the Jan Brady position, I think.
I just saw her for a second.
Did you want to add anything to that, Kelly?
But thank you for saying that. No, just to thank Jean for remembering that conversation, and that's pretty much it. I want, as a Finance member of the Finance Committee, I intend to look a little more, do a little more of a deep dive into those numbers, so that we could better communicate that portion out, especially if we're seeing the growth that we're seeing in that area. We just need to be able to explain why that is, and sometimes that's not very clear to me, so.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. 5.3, Code of Conduct and Policy B3. If you'll bear with me a minute, I think I can pull that up on the screen. We, in the past, have always adopted or signed the Code of Conduct. Board members have. It's just, it's a nice review of how, honestly, it's how we always behave, but I just think it's a nice reminder. And I think we actually talk about a lot of these at Board meetings, that no one has a legal authority outside of the Board. We assign the what, the administration does the how. The Conflict of Interest Policy, I actually attached to this one, because we actually, that's one we don't talk a lot about. We haven't really run into an issue with conflict of interest, but it's a pretty important piece. Executive Session, confidentiality. But basically, the second page reviews all of the codes of ethics that we should be following, and I just think it's important for us to review them annually and to affirm them, which we'll do next meeting. It was actually interesting, I listened to a Board meeting, and they talked, they reviewed their social media policy because of what had happened in the Burlington Police Department, about how Board members won't have fake Twitter accounts and Facebook accounts. I hadn't even thought about adding that to our, to any type of policy, but it probably wouldn't be a bad idea. Russ says he doesn't have any. So with that said, let me get out of this chair, so I can see people. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say about the Code of Ethics, or have any issues about signing it next month?
The only issue that I had was --
Are you unmuted?
I'm just going to use yours.
Okay. Hold on. Okay.
So the only issue that I had was under avoiding conflicts of interest.
No, I can't hear you. Just, I'll unmute you. Maybe.
Can I, if you scroll over your photo in the gallery view, you have the option to unmute yourself?
A little blue button.
Yep. Now you're good.
You can hear me now. So the one question or concern of sorts that I had was under conflicts of interest, the statement about the perception of personal considerations. And that just seems very broad and generic to me. And I'm not even proposing that we necessarily -- And I'm not even proposing that we necessarily rewrite that section of, of this document, but it, it felt like we were a bit open to someone challenging any, any one of us as, as operating from some kind of personal consideration. It, it felt very broad to me, and I didn't know if anyone else had that, that kind of reaction to it. And sort of nebulous, I, I'm not even quite sure. It feels like a catch-all or a kitchen sink, that almost anything could be put in there.
Colleen, can you remind us where in the document you're looking at, please?
Sure, Colleen. It's under board members...
Avoid actual or perceived conflicts of interest. And it's at the end of the second sentence.
On the first, on the first page?
On the first page. Thank you.
This is Angela. I, I, it's funny, I think when I read that, I almost, now that I hear you say it out loud, it seemed so ridiculous to me when I read it, that I was like, well, that's not But I hear what you're saying, yeah. It can, it's, it's a, I'm not, I'm trying to think what the writers, the authors of this document would have been thinking about or worried about, because I think part of the reason we are board members is because we're personally invested, in a sense.
Can you see what I put up on the screen, the actual policy that we have? Why is that? Oh, Jeff, can you unmute? Can you mute yourself? Do you see? Do you see in that first sentence, under definition of conflict of interest means a situation where a board's members' private interests, as distinguished from the board members' interests as a member of the general public, would benefit from or be harmed? Does that, does that address it at all? Colleen?
So I'm thinking back to when we've used the conflict of interest as a board, and people have signed documents in the past, and there are just a couple items I'd like to note. One, we have the policy, and the policy is actually just the first paragraph under policy, and then the definitions. Definitions have really intended to mean monetary gain in the past, that there's a financial gain from some action, some activity, that, that's been the focus before. The other two pages that we have, it seems to me, Lynn, I, I don't know where those came from, but in the past, when I have signed a conflict of interest statement, and I must say that I think I have signed three in 25 years, there was always the understanding that it's absolutely unenforceable. There's, there's, the only thing that the rest of the board can do is have some kind of public censure in a statement, but there's no way to remove a board member, there's nothing that the board can do to stop behaviors other than the peer pressure. So I, I just wanted to make the, the two points. We have a policy, it's very short, and I can see that we probably need to clean up the definition if that's our policy. If we're asked to sign a statement, you know, I'd like to, when Elaine comes back, or maybe Megan can speak to it, you know, that I've heard good arguments for why it's helpful to have board members sign it. It's, it's like a pause, a moment in time, that we all agree to these ideas. But Jeff, I totally hear what you're saying, and I, you know, when I start reading multiple pages, it's like, ooh, you know, I, I feel a little bit uncomfortable myself. So, I mean, not that, because it almost feels like it's getting into, some of it is expectations of beliefs, almost, and that concerns me. But, so I, I appreciate you bringing that up, Jeff, and, you know, I, anyway.
The, the document actually came from the V S B A. So that's, that's where it comes from. The way I read it is the first page is kind of just explaining, it's more what, it's kind of like characteristics of an effective board in an, in an ethical way. And then the second page is actually the Code of Ethics. Colleen is correct, it's totally unenforceable. But it just is, it's, it's kind of like we did at the retreat two years ago, when we said that, you know, we wanted to be an effective board, and kind of these are the characteristics that we, we attempt to do. The motto is practice patience, not perfection. We're not going to be perfect, but, I mean, if, and I don't think anyone could, could come after you if you did any of these, except if you probably took money for personal gain and violated our policy. But, but yeah, it's, it's more of a, it's a new, it's a new board, this is kind of, kind of where we're, we're working at. Did you want to say?
No.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
I would just say one other thing. One of the reasons why this statement, why I, this statement really captured my attention a year ago, not during this budget cycle that we just finished, but last year, I was grocery shopping one day, and a community member from my town stopped and asked a couple of questions about the budget, and asked if I was in favor of the budget passing, and I said that I was very much. And this community member said, well, of course you are, you have children in the school, and I think that's a real conflict. And so when I read personal considerations, and there, there are several of us on the board who have children in the school, but it, again, that statement just felt like a, a bit of a vulnerable, it feels, it feels like exposes potentially some vulnerability just because it is so nebulous in its, in its...
Hold on. Mark?
I'm just going to speak to that real quick, because this community member also approached me, I'm assuming. When I was on the board with the same complaint, and the answer to that is, it's a conflict of interest not to have children in the school as well. There, that particular line of argument gets raised all the time. It's not a valid one, and don't let people get away with it.
Thank you.
I guess the other thing I have to say is, we can choose as a board, I see you, Kelly, hold on just a second. I, we can choose as a board that we don't want to sign it, but we can, we can just acknowledge that we've read it, and we're aware of it, and, and, and go forward from there. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, Kelly, you're on.
I, I would support that, Jean. Insofar as we've read it, we've acknowledged all of it, we discussed it, but I feel we all take our oath of office when we're voted in as school board members, and other than my oath of office, I'm not inclined to sign any other documentation.
Wait, aren't you our assistant clerk?
Not yet.
Oh, not yet, okay. Now, I, I hear you. Go ahead, Brendan.
We can change the bottom of that, just saying that we've reviewed and read the, the statement. It doesn't mean we have to agree with everything, but I find it odd that we, we don't want to sign something like that, or at least acknowledge publicly that we have, have this.
Thoughts?
Well, hi.
Kelly, Angela, sorry.
We have our own policy, though, right, as a C V S D board?
We have a conflict of interest policy, yes.
Right. Right, 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 but not a broader, we don't have our own Code of Ethics.
No.
Is there anything in that V S B A Code of Ethics that's not addressed by one of our, by a policy of ours? You know, we may have separate policies covering each, I didn't, I have to...
So I can't, I can't...
I will say that I think I have signed this when I was on the board, and it's not a statement necessarily for the public, I don't think. I think this is a statement between you and the other board members, that you will work together in this fashion. That's what I would say about the document. It's, no, no one's going to jail by any, anything that's in this, as far as I'm concerned. I think there's some bigger concepts in here than just conflict of interest.
Maybe what I would ask the board to do is, between now and our meeting in, at the end of April, is to really look at this document, and it'll come back up for, for, it'll come back as an action item if we want to sign it. And if the board doesn't want to do it, we just don't pass the motion. But I, I do think it's worth, you know, maybe a little deeper, a deeper look, if everyone is okay with that, that method. Colleen?
So, it's, oh, I'm echoing. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
It seems that, well, it's just not working, something's going on.
You're muted. Are you getting your own feedback? Yeah.
So it seems that, can you mute yours, Lynn?
Or Colleen, if you, if you just turn your computer way down, it might help.
Well, it was working before, I think it was reverbing.
It's better now.
Yeah. So it seems to me that, it's, you know, the term conflict of interest, or whatever, these are norms of behavior, group behavior, of how we're going to work together, and perhaps it's a matter of just shrinking this and not being so broad in so many details, because I have to feel, I, I admit that for me, it starts feeling a little bit like Big Brother, and the teenager in me wants to push back. And so I would be in favor of just reviewing our norms of interacting with each other in some way. Leave the board, conflict of interest policy as it is, maybe sharpen up the definition, but that seems sufficient. But that would be my vote. Just recognize it for its limited use.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess that's, I was going to go in that direction as well. Colleen, I was wondering, Lynn, what, what your goal is in presenting the document to be signed, so that maybe then, if, since it sounds like there are people who, since there are some of us who wouldn't be comfortable signing it, what's the goal, and then maybe we find another document, or we create a document that is, feels good to everyone?
Well, I think, I think, oh, hold on, I'm muted. I think, like I said, it's, this actually was more, I'm, it was more of a pro forma thing. We've done it in the past, maybe not since we've been a consolidated board, but it was a standard thing that we always used to do, and it was just, it was a, it was a agreement, kind of how we all would operate. You know, the board speaks with one voice, a collective understanding of, of what, what the board's kind of role was. And honestly, this was our first meeting, as since we're a new, a new board with Ken on it, and it seemed like that was the right time to, you know, to review it on an annual basis. Maybe it is just something, if you all would come to the new board member orientation whenever it is scheduled, we could just put in as part of that, as, as a, you know, that this is kind of how we all, we all operate. I'm seeing Jocelyn's hand.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I did raise a blue hand.
I saw that, I saw that.
So Lynn, I definitely have signed this at least once, maybe twice. I'm not sure which year I signed it, but I definitely did sign it. I am going to echo, though, just what I'm hearing Jeff and Angela and Colleen all say, only because I have also had someone sort of just walk up to me in a supermarket and, you know, say that I should have no opinion on anything that's going on because I'm an elected official. But just, just so, just to make sure everyone is aware, I know I definitely have at least signed it once or twice, so it is not something new, and I'm not surprised that it was on the agenda, so just throwing it out there. But I do think that if we just have a common idea of how we're going to work together, and just sort of a common agreement between us, I think that that's probably more than efficient. I will mute myself again.
So what I'm hearing is, there's no need to sign this document, but if we could maybe have an extended conversation at some point, taking out the conflict of interest, because that is actually a separate policy piece, about just our expectations as a board, and we can, we could, we could do that at the retreat as well, although I got to tell you, this retreat list is already four things long, and it's only 20 minutes into the meeting. Oh, no, 52 minutes into the meeting. I'm happy to do that, it's, it's the, it's the will of the board, and I'm, I'm getting a sense that people are happy leaving it, leaving it as, as is for now, and pursuing it at a later date. Okay. Sounds good to me. We've lost Aaron. I just see a ceiling fan there. Okay, well, speaking of the retreat, 5.4, retreat. So kind of the focus of this is expectations for the retreat, and let me talk just a little bit. So last year, the past two years, we have done kind of deep dives into two areas. We've had a morning topic and a afternoon topic. Last year was the equity and the, the data, and the year before that was our eight characteristics as a board, kind of coming together with our values, and then the afternoon, we did a lot of the engage, I think it was the engagement survey that we really focused on. So my question for the board is, we have the equity audit already set for, for retreat this May. There may be an opportunity for some professional development for the board around equity. We, I know we talked about that last year, and we also have, the indicators committee will present the, some proposed benchmarks and the data with those for the retreat. I heard at our last retreat that there was also a desire to talk about committees and how committees function on the board. I have a question right here from tonight that says the budget process needs to, looking at the budget process through a, a different fiscal environment. So there's a lot there, and I guess I would like a sense from the board, do, would you want this year's retreat to look different from the past two years, in that we don't do deep dives and do shorter segments on multiple topics, or would you prefer deep dives? That's just my first topic, my, my, my first question, because I guess the answer to that question then will determine what are we going to talk about.
Like, for me, really short dives, we might as well just have a few extra board meetings here and there. You know, typically, the, the retreat is to, you know, tackle the larger issues that we can't do over two or three hours.
Okay. Hold on. Jocelyn, she's got her blue hand up.
Yay! I have to tell you that Caroline and Augie have been home for the last two days, and they keep raising their hands in the middle of the desk to get my attention. I, I think that deeper delves, dives make more sense. I am a huge advocate that we talk about committees, and then I would be, I think, remiss if I can say that we should also have either some kind of conversation paired with maybe some professional development, or just professional development, or just a discussion, but also about the equity audit, and then sort of equity umbrella, I guess. But I think that anything that has to do with the budget conversation would actually lead into a committee conversation, so I don't, maybe even the committee conversation could be paired with, with any talk about the budget. And that's just kind of based off of discussions that I feel like the Finance Committee has had. I think they're very linked together, so I don't know if we could... the budget. And that's just kind of based off of discussions that I feel like the finance committee has had. I think they're very linked together. So I don't know if we could just pair them together.
Anyone else? Colleen?
My, my vote would be to keep the retreat focused on board operations, which gets back to how the committees function and how they serve the, the board as a whole. I, I feel like over the past few years, our committees have been moving in their own direction and never the twain shall meet. And I would like to have our committees come back together in some way so that it feels more cohesive. I, I do miss being deeply involved in budget and I do miss being deeply involved in indicators. And somehow, and if I'm doing HR and policy, I want to somehow be able to dive into the other pieces as well. So to me, that's, that's board operations and how the committees serve the board as a whole. So that, that would be my, I guess if I were to prioritize, that would be my number one.
Do you have an opinion on whether we do deep dives into a small number of topics versus multiple topics?
Uh, you know, to me, board operations is huge in how that's gonna structure. You know, as far as the indicators, what I would like to see, I think part of our, our responsibility as a board is to look at data sets. I really don't, this is terrible, but I don't have a lot of interest in diving deep into student level data. I wanna see aggregate data, you know, like eighth grade algebra or something like that. I'm, I'm interested in what are the indicators that are showing how our, our system is functioning? And so to me, it's like employment turnover rates, it's enrollment projections, it's scores on norm referenced assessments, it's, it's norm, it's evaluation, aggregated evaluation performance scores on those assessments that we think are critical to our own district. So really, I'm, I'm looking at, I'm interested in big level, like aggregated data across students and then the higher level of how is the system functioning as a whole. And to me, that, you know, part of the system functioning as a whole includes looking at our employment data as well. So, so the question of deep dive, you know, I can see that board operations, that alone could take a couple of hours, you know, if we think about activities that would go along with this. Indicators, I could see that being a two hour block of time. Budget, I don't know how we're going to get away from that. And then equity, you know, that's a big block of time because we've put interest into that. Maybe equity is the common framework that we keep going back to. So I didn't really answer your question, Lynn.
Actually, did, you said there are four topics. So you went right in the middle. Two little ones, eight, no, yeah, two big ones, eight little ones, four were right in the middle. All right. Any other thoughts that people have? People? Barbara?
Yeah, I would like for us to start off with an audit on equity, maybe followed by the indicators committee, what they have to report, because I think that will kind of drill down, like what, you know, what's this, what the audit is talking about. And at least we need to understand.
Hold on. Sorry.
Oh, yeah? I have to be in front of the.
Barbara's, Barbara's gonna rewind.
Turn the microphone on, so go ahead. Oh, okay. Rewind.
So I think we should start off with an audit on equity, then followed by the, what the indicators are saying, because we, we wanna have an idea of whether the indicators are on the same page with what Elaine will have for the audit on equity. And then I agree, we need some understanding on the committee functions, but also on the other hand, as far as the budget, I think, you know, the, the board or whoever will attend, I think it will help them if they, they get some kind of framework on how the budget processes or even give some feedback, it will help us as we start, you know, our year kicking into the budget process for 2021. So I think, you know, again, back to the question, audit, which shouldn't be too long because I think we already have the data by then. Going to the indicators committee, I'm thinking that's maybe four hours lunch. Then I would like to see again how committee functioned and maybe, you know, build into the budget process. If possible, one hour for any professional development, which is always fun, because I think we get into small groups and, and I don't know what that will be, but I think it will be nice.
Back to virtual reality. It's not really virtual, but any other input?
So I have a, I have a question really for, for the board. So we are, as everyone knows all too well, we're moving into an unprecedented time with school closure beginning tomorrow and we don't know how long that's going to extend and the ramifications of what that will all be. And certainly, we're so fortunate that our central administration, central office administration and our local administration is managing these incredible events so tremendously well. But I, and I don't know exactly what our role will be in all of that, but we're going to come to June at the end of a time period that's going to be unprecedented. And so I'm just wondering if we need to at least create some space, if there is review and examination or discussion, if there is any role that we have in that process. But I would appreciate hearing from other folks about whether you feel like we're going to need some time to look at what this district has been through by the time we reach June at this retreat. And the only other quick thing I would just say is that I know we're going to be addressing these issues at each board meeting, but are we going to need some concentrated time? And I, I don't know when that would occur other than our retreats.
Megan?
Yeah? I actually really appreciate you bringing that up. Because that, exactly what you said could very well be true. I mean, I think if, if this, if we were truly to reopen after April 6th, then, then, I mean, that still, that alone will have a significant impact, but probably one that, you know, readies us to have a somewhat normal end of year. But we don't have a whole lot of information about, we don't have a whole lot of confidence that that's true. If anything, there's a lot of signals to say it would be a longer closure. So I think you're exactly right. And I also don't know exactly what it would look like. It could be that we, that it has huge impacts for, for kids and learning and, and finances, and yet structurally and organizationally, it manages itself well, right? Like, there's some logistic part of it that, that once we're, once we have figured it out, might go, okay. So then that would still allow the board to focus on all your normal things. And, or not. So I think it's good to have that out in the ether so we can revisit it, because you're absolutely right.
I have that down. I'm muted.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Jocelyn is the only one that raises a blue hand. I'm just saying. Go ahead, Jocelyn.
Okay, there you go. I am a rule follower. Megan, thank you for bringing that up. I actually, I had this thought before the meeting started, but then I forgot. I'm actually wondering if we should preemptively have a second date in mind, just in case for some reason, I would love to think we're all back in school on April 6th. This is a very novel idea to my kids that we're at home, but I don't know how last, how long it'll last. But I just think that with the information that we have of how long it's been lasting for other countries and other places, realistically, I'm not, I just think it might make sense just to have like another second date in mind, just in case a date at the end of May doesn't actually pan out for us.
That's not a, that's not a bad idea. And I think what I would ask is, is you let me work with administration to kind of come up with some potential dates to come back to the board with. I, I still would like to, to set a date and be optimistic. But other than that, I, I can come back to you. I think that's a, that's a great idea. Okay, now Brendan is raising his hand. It's the Williston thing. Go for it, Brendan.
Whether we follow the guidance of the department or how, is that one we're gonna open? I guess I don't understand how we set dates.
No, no, no. I think what, I think what Jocelyn was talking about was the, the date for the retreat. It doesn't, it doesn't make a lot of sense if school is out, out of session and everybody's kids are at home. That could be a really interesting retreat. So we, we, it would be good to have some options. I think that's what she, she meant.
All right, that's a misunderstanding.
That's okay. Barbara, which means Jean.
Mute. So I don't think, and Jeff, thank you for bringing that up, but I, I wouldn't think that we'll have to wait until May to convene. If needed, I think we need another mini retreat just focused on this item because we won't be able to mix it with whatever our, you know, our usual operations are. So I think, you know, whatever it is, maybe, and keep in mind, and I realize that administration is very busy, but let's maybe think of a mini retreat just focused on this item, which will be maybe after work again, you know, like three, how we did it last time, three hours or four hours. But I think we shouldn't wait until end of May. We're gonna need in between, how are things working?
Oh, I see. Outside of our, outside of our regular board meetings. Because we will keep our, our committee and our board meetings. That's the, that's the hope as of 7:15 on March 17th, would be to keep our meetings. But let me work with Megan and, and the rest of administration. And actually, Elaine will be back and, and I can come back to the board with that. Any other input right now on retreat items? I'm hearing four pretty big themes. And this is not the final hand. I just wanna make sure that, that we've got it covered. Okay.
Can I jump in? Like, can I jump in? For, about the blue, about the blue hand? Because I was supposed to be watching for blue hands, but I wanted to let you know. It turns out only you can see them.
Oh.
And then secondly, Ray was asking in the chat, what's the blue hand?
Oh.
Yeah. It's, Ray, if you go down to, if you're, if you move your cursor down to the bottom of your screen, then a toolbar pops up. And if you click on participants, then you'll see a list of participants and you'll have two, you'll have options to mute yourself and raise your hand. And when you raise your hand, it puts a little blue hand in Lynn's view in the, because Lynn is the host of the meeting.
I didn't serve any really good, you know, drinks to go with this meeting. We got food here. We got lots of food that Leo wants us to take home.
Right.
All right.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, we're on to 5.7, the weighting study, which is Jean. And, and actually, if you guys have your COLT report, go back to the COLT report because I think that's the information that Jean is going to be focused on. And I'll see if I can't pull it up here. Okay, you're on, Jean.
Okay, thank you. So this is the Legislative Pupil Weighting Factors Report, which has been out in the sort of discussion for, since about January, I think, when it, when it came out. It's, it's an attempt to, as, as you guys know, we have several weights that we apply now so that we don't, when we talk about equalized pupils, it's not just the count, the weights adjust for, for example, children who are English language learners. It accounts for the fact that it costs more to educate those children equitably. So the legislature put out a study last year asking for some advice on whether or not those weights were correct. They got the report back. I really just wanna make the point that we have some concerns with the study, we don't, administration has some concerns with the study, we don't have concerns with the concept. Clearly, these, these factors are ridiculously outdated, they're very old and need to be adjusted. But we do have some concerns about whether or not the answer they came up with is correct. So if you look at it, there, for instance, the poverty rate, right now, it, we weight children of poverty by 1.25 and they're going to almost four. English language learners going from 1.2 to 2.6. They also have a, something they call population density, which has to do with the population per square mile. They're trying to acknowledge that it does cost more to educate children in more rural areas. There, there are other weights that they changed. They changed some weights for, for grades, grade level, and they proposed a small school weighting, which I think is supposed to take the place of the current small schools grant. I didn't, I didn't just put these on the table because the, the grade factor is going to really approach everybody the same, assuming they're, they all have kids going through 12th grade. And the study that was done by the Joint Fiscal Office, which is what I base my numbers off of, didn't include the small schools adjustment. So it's really the two that will affect us, or the, or the three that will affect us are on here, the poverty rate, the English language learners and the population density. Now, if you remember, this is really complicated because it don't just like weight, give more weight to students who have more needs. But when you weight everybody, since all the weights are going up except for preschool, weight everybody up, now you have too many kids. You have too many students. So they just divide it so that you get back down to the regular number of students, the real number of students in, in the building. So, well, the, the short answer is, the outcome of this is that when they applied, the Joint Fiscal Office applied, they use last year's numbers. You wonder why it's FY20? It's because they used FY20 numbers when they did the study. But our equalized pupil count of 4,144 would, with the new weights, would become 3,266. So we would lose 900 kids.
We would have, we would have fewer kids, equalized pupils, than we have actual pupils.
By a lot. So when you, so as you probably all remember from, the budget really wasn't that long ago, our tax rate is based on our net ed spending per equalized pupil. So when you drop the number of equalized pupil by 25%, your cost per equalized pupil goes up substantially. It goes from 16,000, which is just under the average for the state, to over $20,000 per equalized pupil. And that's what the tax rate is based on. So the numbers in these came right from the JFO. Our tax rate would go up 32 cents. It goes from $1.51, which is what it was last year, to $1.83.
And that's without losing a population. We're losing equalized pupils, but we're not losing actual pupils. Okay.
Russ goes hand up too.
Russ, and then Colleen.
So our number went down by, our number of students in that simulation went down somewhere between 20 and 25%. Do you know what the statewide number was? Did it go down at all or is it, you know, comparable to where it was so that there were sort of winners and losers in this?
The latter, because you have to get back down to the actual number of students we have. And this was just using FY20 students. So they had to end up at the same total number of students. So there are definitely winners and losers.
Wow. We got crushed.
Colleen? Yep. It's you. Sorry, I had to unmute myself.
Okay. So Lynn, mute yourself? Am I reverbing? Okay. So some of you might recall that I'm on the V SBA District, V SBA Board of Directors, 22 board members from around the state. We meet once a month. There are staff at V SBA that go to the Capitol. There are staff at V SBA that go to the Capitol, State House every day, and meet with legislators. At the V SBA, we have had presentations on the Waiting Study. And I just want to reiterate a couple of things. One, the original Waiting Study that we've been running on the formula, nobody can identify where those numbers came from. There was no science behind it. No one can pull up an old report that says this is how we derived it. It just were, it was a set of formulas that were derived at one point, and they've lived with us for decades. The second piece I want to point out is nobody is arguing with the methodology of the Waiting Study. The methodology meets the rigor of this type of work. And they were, you know, pulling from a number of different other reports from around the country and different ways to do it. I haven't heard anybody say that the methodology was faulty. The concern has been more about how the legislators might use the Waiting Study and going forward, what any kind of implementation might look like, and a timeline for implementation. And, you know, yes, it looks bad for us, but if you live in Winuski, it looks good for them. As being on the V SBA Board of Directors, I am representing the region of Grand Isle, Chittingen County, or Chittingen, Grand Isle. And there are winners and losers at both ends of the extreme within that region. And, you know, it's going to be a challenge for our district going forward. And, you know, hopefully, there's some thoughtfulness behind any new formulas that might be put out there. But I just, I think it's important to emphasize the point that I haven't heard anybody finding fault with the methodology. And so that's a challenge. And I think the big concern, the other piece that I've heard, is we have new legislation related to special ed, for example, in the block grants. And so there's concern not to make too many changes at once. I mean, that's one of the things I've heard. Because then if you have policy change based on special education block grant, for example, and then you change your financial policy related to a new Waiting Study, you don't know what the impact is or what's creating a change within the system if there are too many changes at once. And so a lot of legislators have been concerned about letting any new financial policies take hold. You know, there may be something else that, you know, leadership team is hearing from others within the system, but that's what I've been hearing from the SBA conversations. Okay.
Barbara's going to talk.
So I have a quick question. And correct me if I'm wrong, in the past, the state weighted average has worked in our favor where the number, the count, the total count of students has come out higher than what we actually have.
No, no. Ours has always been a little bit lower. When you count the everybody.
So like, for example, I'm referencing like the budget cycle we just went through. Our numbers, the total student count was 3,900 something, right?
No.
Am I right or wrong?
Our total students is more like 4,300 when you count all the preschool, which is everybody that's in here. We've never added students. We've always been, because we have fewer children of poverty, we have fewer children of ELL students. So we've always been slightly on the lower side. I can show you the numbers, but that's absolutely true. This just spreads it dramatically. That's all.
That's good to know. That will be helpful.
Any other thoughts or input? I know, I haven't heard the results. I know there was a, last week, in Another World and Another Time, there was actually a meeting at the State House for public input on the Waiting Study. It was held on the 11th, I believe, which was Wednesday. I did get a letter from Martha Heath, or an email from Martha Heath. Her board actually wrote a letter to submit for testimony. They're in our situation where they will see a significant rise in their equalized per pupil spending. And similar to what Colleen was saying, they weren't so much arguing that they were against changing the weights. It was the process by which it was going to be done. And had the legislature really considered, you know, all the different consequences of such a change? And so she had sent me this email saying, you know, what's your board doing? And I said, well, we're talking about it at our board meeting next week. And I would put out if the board was interested. It's too late for the Senate ed hearing to provide any information, but I'm sure it's, huh? I'm sure it could come up in the House ed if anyone had any interest as a board to weigh in. Hold on. Meghan's going to talk.
I'm sorry, this is quick. But I would also imagine that it's probably not too late to give input to the Senate just because they had just closed, they had partially closed the State House on the 11th. So people could have, you know, I think there was an electronic option, you could have submitted something. So it did still happen, but I don't think they got nearly the input that they wanted. So if the board wanted to communicate, the Senate would probably take the input also.
Jean?
I just wanted to point out that underneath the tables, I did write down some questions that we have. I mean, I agree that if you've seen this Waiting Study, you have to trust the people who did it right because it's 105-page or something. That might have been my audit, sorry. It's a very thick, very technical document. So I'd not, wouldn't consider myself able to question it. But we did have some questions, and probably the biggest one from a taxpayer point of view, which came up at the administrations we talked about, is that all this does is change the tax rate. It doesn't ensure that that money goes to students. So that's a huge concern, I think, for our community. I think our community is very generous, and if this is absolutely right, and we all decided it's the right thing to do, shifting money to needy students is not something our community comes out against. But shifting money to lower somebody else's tax rate and not invest it in students, I think, would have a serious problem with that. So there's just some, maybe this is to what, maybe this is what Colleen was even saying, it's not about the academic study, but the implementation and making sure that that is right.
Colleen, did you want to weigh in again?
Yeah, I just, Lynn, I was wondering if we could see Martha's letter?
I can ask her for it. She'll forward me a letter. She'll forward me the letter that they sent. I'm happy to send that to the board.
Because, you know, she's been a legislator, she's been a board member. I'm sure that, and I know Kim Gleason, who does finance for the V SBA, and she's on the State Board of Ed, I know that letter was vetted very well. And so if we were to send a letter, what I would advocate is that we parallel, if not copy and paste, their letter. Because I know they put time into it. And I think, you know, so what I've heard is that for those districts where it's, where those districts would take the biggest hit, such as ours, the concern is the implementation, the steps.
Okay. What I'll do is I'll forward a request to Martha for her letter, get that to the board, and we can decide on April 7th at that meeting, which will do a board meeting before the committee meetings, whether we want to copy and paste or just say we second what Essex wrote.
Yeah.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that? Okay. Hold on, just a second. Who's going? Jeff?
I have just one question for you, Jean. How do we calculate poverty rate? And are you confident that we're capturing everyone who might fit into that particular category?
You're still good to go.
The poverty rate is based on our free and reduced lunch, approved free and reduced lunch applications. I'm not confident that reaches everybody. We do our very, very best. There are some people who refute, who do not want that assistance, and so they don't volunteer. But we catch a big majority of them. We work pretty hard at it.
So beyond that, we have no other data or information? Because I would be concerned about that, too, that there are families who don't feel comfortable in utilizing that program. And so this may not be, as hard as you work at this, I'm just wondering what the gap might be between those who utilize free and reduced lunch versus those who really may be struggling economically.
I guess I would only say that, unless, I can't think of a reason why we would be different than other communities in that regard. So we may be off, but everybody else may be off, too. I just did want to point out, because I worked hard on the math. If you wanted to get back to a flat tax rate with these new numbers, it'd be $11.7 million to take out of our budget, which is 15% of total spending. But if you say you really can't take out special ed, you really can't take out debt service, it'd be cutting our budget by 20%. 20% of your teachers, 20% of your staff. You know, that's just not going to happen, which is going to increase education costs in the state.
Colleen?
If it was with this district or some other place, but I do know that some districts ask every family to fill out a form. And the way they sell it to the family is to say that it helps us gather data so that you, they're in the driver's seat, helping the district with collecting data. So they just ask everybody to fill something out. I don't, I can't remember if that was our district or not, but that's like the only way to capture it. And unfortunately, that's the only way to measure poverty, is the free and reduced lunch. That's all. Thanks.
All right. Anything else on the Waiting Study? We'll revisit it on the 7th. 5.8, Policies for Discussion. I'm going to let Mark.
Sure. So the Policy Committee has been busy over the past couple months, few months. And what's presented here is some of that work. There are a bunch of policies listed here, and they're all linked in the agenda. The first one, tobacco prohibition, is the only one that we're proposing changes to. The rest are, will be presented for reaffirmation by the board. The changes to the tobacco prohibition are really to align the language in the policy to new state law. So if you recall, last year, we passed a, we played with the tobacco policy then, too, to reflect the dangers around electronic nicotine products. And in the time since we did that, the state has passed a state law that deals with it as well. And the V SBA has a new policy that aligns language with that state law. And that's all that we're doing here. We're not changing anything else about it, except sort of definitionally, so that our policy aligns with those words. And the rest are, will be presented to be reaffirmed. We have been going through our policies, comparing them to new V SBA guidance, and we've just been checking that our policies align with the new guidance, or if ours may even be a little, a little more better than the V SBA. Colleen, you want to add anything?
Sure. I just wanted, just want to thank Mark for helping us move through these policies. And he's, you know, always comes to this work with a smile and is willing to help us tackle it. We will, we're going to continue moving through. And Mark, I don't know if we want to mention that there will be no policy meeting this Thursday.
It's a good time to mention it.
Okay. But when we get back on track, we're just going to continue to plug away at it. And if you follow the hyperlinks, you can see everything you want in the world, plus more about what the Policy Committee is working on, including a table of policies comparing the V SBA to CBSD. So follow links if you want. It's all there. If you want to add comments to the side of anything that we're working on, draft minutes or whatever, we'll take a look at it. And again, thank you to Mark for helping us with this work. Thank you. That's it.
Does anyone have any input on the policies? Are you muted? Why are we reverberating? On the policies, the next time we'll see these will be in April, and they will be up for approval under the consent agenda unless anyone has any input that they'd like to provide.
Just point out, sorry.
That's me.
Also happy that between now and then, if you have any questions, just shoot me an email.
Then 5.9, actually, Kelly, I'm going to ask you to unmute. Can I unmute, Kelly? I don't know. Are you muted or unmuted, Kelly?
No, no.
Okay, there, yeah.
I'm unmuting. It just takes me a second.
Okay. I can't tell from my little thingamajig. So I was talking with Kelly. I called Kelly this afternoon and asked her if she wouldn't, would help me craft a letter that I would like to send. I feel like we've never talked about sending board letters so many times in one meeting. But as a board, I really would like to send something out to the entire faculty and staff at CBSD as we begin this new adventure tomorrow, Thursday and Friday. And Kelly has an amazing way with words. And so without hearing any objection from the board, I guess I'm asking if anyone has any objections to Kelly crafting a letter to be sent out on our behalf. We'll share it with you all before it all gets sent out, but are we, are we good? Is everyone? I'm seeing lots of head nods. Everybody's okay with that? All right. Thank you, Kelly, for doing that for us, as you now have your kids at home, too. I appreciate that. And I should also say at this point, too, Colleen and Angela totally helped this. They gave me a little tutorial. I did my distance learning yesterday afternoon with them on Zoom, so thank you. We have so much talent on this board. And to Jeff's point, we're going to figure this out at the retreat. We're going to figure out everybody's special talents, and then we'll figure out a way to use them all in the future. So thank you, everybody. 6.0, Action Matters. 6.1, do I have a motion to set the retreat date for May 28th at All Souls? Raise, hold on. Ray? Is that the motion?
Move the, move the motion.
Thanks, Ray. Do I have a second? Barbara? Okay, all those in favors? Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, I guess everybody has to kind of unmute for.
Maybe they can raise their hands or something?
That's.
Aye.
Everybody just raise your hand if you're in favor. Okay. Terrific. Thank you. Brendan? I see it. Perfect. So we're set for May 28th. Kelly, if everyone can see Kelly's comments, if anyone has any special words, thoughts that you'd like her to incorporate, pop them to her as soon as possible. Do I have a motion to elect Kelly as the Assistant Clerk? I've got Russ and Barbara.
Second.
Okay. And Kelly has agreed to do this. So. So if there is no further discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Okay. And any opposed? Okay. I think we're good.
Kelly raised her hand.
Kelly raised her hand. Now, that means we have to do a roll call. Come on, no. All right. 6.3, do I have a motion to approve a 0.8 FTE Equity and Diversity Coordinator position? Can I get you just a second?
No, move.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Angela's seconded. Their discussion, any more discussion? The administration included, I think you have a link to it, the, has everyone seen their rationale? Is there any further discussion? Hold on.
I'd like to say a few words.
Okay, Ray.
I think in view of the fact that we're facing an $11 million whack from the state, it's irresponsible to start adding more personnel, especially since we've added, I think, five people this year. Looking at the list of responsibilities, and I don't want to go over each and every one of them, but it seems like we have a Director of Visit Curriculum, Learning and Indicators, and a great many of these, probably three quarters of them anyway, seem to be right up Jeff's alley, something he should be working on. Few of the other ones ought to be covered by guidance and perhaps human resources. And if we're really looking at equity fixing, I think $100,000 could be spent in a much better way. We could make sure that all of our students have computer access and high-speed internet or something would go a long way to improving equity than adding somebody to the payroll. And looking at these things, I'm not really sure what we would do differently in '21, '22 with this person on board. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Ray. Any other thoughts or input? I just, I guess, Ray, I just want to make sure, I hear your point about adding positions to the payroll. I just want to, I just want to make sure it's clear that the money for this position is, was in the budget that was just approved.
Yeah, the money was in the budget, but we don't have to spend it.
Point taken. Any other? Jocelyn, are you twirling your hand, or rare raising your hand? I'm sorry. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Ray?
I am opposed, obviously.
Okay. Thank you, Ray. And Brendan, you raised your hand, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. So it's just, I think Ray was just the one opposed. Okay. 7.0, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thanks, Ray. Russ will second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next meeting dates, honestly, we've got them set for April 7th and April 21st, I suspect. The April 7th one, there will be a board, if we go forward with it, there'll be a board meeting prior to the committee meetings, just so that we can look at the CVSD calendar, because we'll need to approve that in April. And I feel like there was something else. Oh, Martha's letter, Martha's letter conversation is on that as well. I'll, if you guys can just be patient and flexible, we'll let you know what, how that will all happen. Honestly, the Zoom works really well, but I almost think it works better if we're all in our separate places. Otherwise, one person is constantly, that would be me, muting, unmuting, muting, unmuting. But it's nice to see everybody, and we might be really tired of our families by April I would just ask you, I sent you all a link for the meeting evaluation on a Google poll. It's totally anonymous when you send that link back. I tested it out. So if you guys wouldn't mind filling out that. And please be honest about the, about this, the Zoom meeting, because we can only get, we can only get better. Russ is laughing at me. So with that being said, just to remind you, I'm going to end this meeting. We're going to have to go into another room, and then I will start up the second meeting, which I sent you guys all a second login for, for executive session. But do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Move.
Thank you. Russ, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. We'll see you guys in a few minutes. Give us about five minutes to get set up.